Here we are. Good evening. Welcome to the June 11, 2024 regular meeting of the Town of Milton Select Board. My name is Richard Wells. I'm the Chair of the Board, and I ask that you all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, item three is public comment. We don't have anyone for that tonight, so we'll move right on. No reaction or anything? What's wrong with you people? So, we allow 21 minutes. I take it there are people. I saw people signing already. So, each speaker will be allowed three minutes. I will give you a 30-second notice. If your three minutes is about to end, I ask, since there's so many people here, there's no way we're going to get all of you in. So, if you try to end it at three minutes, we will appreciate that so that I can, we can accommodate as many of the speakers. Ken, so, I don't see. Want to grab me a jump?
I can do.
Oh, thanks. Let me get to my time. Thank you. Okay. So, the first speaker is Vanessa Foster of. If you could just come up and take a seat. You don't have to talk. I see the topics. You don't have to mention anything. So, good evening and welcome.
Thank you so much. Good evening. My name is Vanessa Foster. I live at 1325 Canton Ave. I am also a town meeting member for Precinct 5. I have two children in the Milton Public Schools, and I am here tonight to ask the Select Board to please move ahead with putting the debt override for the new middle school on the November ballot. I am a local realtor, and I know firsthand that my clients moved to Milton for the schools. But I also know that clients stay in Milton for the community. We are so lucky to live in a town where there is so much civic engagement. It is unbelievable how much time and resources our neighbors are willing to dedicate to the betterment of our town through committees, elected positions, and activism. A core value of Milton is honoring community voice. This year, we have seen time and time again how valuable it is to have the opportunity to have our voice matter in town decisions. Much like the MBTA Community Act, funding and building a new middle school is a decision that will impact every citizen of Milton. This is a decision that every citizen deserves the opportunity to have their voice heard. So, tonight, you will hear many reasons why our kids and our community deserve a new middle school. But I'm not asking you tonight to decide whether or not you support a new middle school. I am asking you to honor every citizen's right to have a voice in the decision. Please put the debt override for the new middle school on the ballot in November.
Thank you. Peter Oberstheimer? Is that what I spelled? Did I say that correctly?
Very close.
Obershimer. I'm sorry. I saw the H as a T.
Good evening. Peter Obershimer, 49 Row Street, also a town meeting member in Precinct 6. I sit before this board to urge that you navigate through the school issue to a vote in November. I'm a proud parent of a preschool boy. You know, as you know, in February of 2019, the town established the School Building Committee to look at the overcrowding issue and come up with a solution to address it. That was two months before my son was born. He's headed a kindergarten next year with what's going to be the largest enrollment class in decades. He couldn't be prouder to be headed there for kindergarten. My biggest concerns, as we sort of look at this issue with no end in sight, admittedly, is that really deciding between, one, this solution not be, you know, resolved in time for him and his buddies and the surrounding classes, or, you know, even potentially worse, kicking this problem to the next set of parents in a couple of years from now. That's really tough to sit with and for our community to sit with. And for what? We knew when, back in 2019, this was going to be a difficult task at hand. And that's why a process and structure was set to address it. You know, the moderator appointed a committee of experts, engineers, architects, lawyers. I'm a lawyer. You know, don't know how I would say add to that, but project engineers.
We got a lot of lawyers. Yeah, we're used to that.
And they did just what they were tasked to do. You know, I don't think, if you've communicated with this school board, you know, you can't suggest that they haven't been incredibly thorough in what they've done, the parcels they've considered, the schools they've toured, the agency they worked with to put forward a plan that's approvable. And here we are. You know, it's teeing up for you guys to help navigate this through, at least for a vote for the rest of us. I couldn't think of a greater challenge before you. You know, this has got to be one of the reasons why you guys are here and want to do this in office, is to, you know, think about the parents, the families, the rest of the community. And, you know, we need decisive leadership on this issue now. So, thank you.
Dr. Donahue.
How are you, Mike?
Good evening. I'm well. Thank you, Chair Wells. It's a pleasure to be here. It's a pleasure to see you.
Good to see you.
Kevin Donahue, 203 School Street. I would like to urge the Select Board to move as rapidly as possible regarding a debt exclusion override for the construction of a new school. The rapid escalation of building costs in the past five years has been dramatic and alarming. Any avoidable delay in authorizing this debt and securing a contract for construction will result in tens of millions of dollars in needless additional expenses that will then be passed along to the business owners and homeowners of the town of Milton. The need for a new school is pressing and unremitting. Please, please, move forward with a fall 2024 override for the school construction. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Wells. How are you doing? You get an A for effort for time management tonight. Probably the best we've seen in about four years. Leslie McCarthy.
We do have a couple online whenever you want to take those as well.
All right.
Good evening. Leslie McCarthy. I'm at 46 St. Mary's Road and a parent of two small kids at Tucker Elementary School. And I'm also a town meeting member who ran largely to support the community efforts and support of our schools a year and a half ago. And I feel like I bring a unique perspective as not only as a parent, but I've also been on Tucker PTO Board for the last several years, being the Tucker co-president the last two years. I spent many, many hours in the school and have witnessed the overcrowding on a daily basis. I've seen kids learning in the hallways. I've seen kids learning in closets. I've seen the limitations that that places on our kids and our teachers and our parents that are able to access our kids in the school. The overcrowding not only impacts the classroom learning, but it also places limitations on additional programming that the PTO and the districts can provide for their kids in terms of enhanced extracurricular learning. There simply isn't space to bring someone in to do an assembly, to do a program that many of our surrounding towns are able to offer their kids. I'm told time and time again, that sounds great. We don't have space. And that's a detriment to our kids. It's a detriment to our families and our teachers that we can't provide. Even if the PTOs have the funds, we don't have the space to provide these opportunities for our kids. So, I really urge you to put this to a vote in November. Let the parents, let the families decide. We cannot afford to delay this any longer. Our kids deserve better. They really deserved for the community to decide this. Thank you for your time.
Joan Fall. Cell 11.
Good evening. My name is Joan Fall. I live at 172 Granite Ave. I've lived there for the last 37 years with my husband Greg. A personal decision 37 years ago to move to Milton had to do with the schools, the highly regarded schools. Our daughters are 2008 graduates of Milton High School. They attended Collycott and Pierce. They experienced overcrowding at various times during their school career. They dealt with schools that had not been maintained, buildings that were constructed, being constructed around them. They were in the class that was at Milton High School, currently Milton High School, which was Pierce at the time. Despite all, they benefited from the great teachers, programs, and staff, and the volunteers throughout the town, including Girl Scouts and the town sports. It was the village of the Milton schools and the staff and the parents that led to their success, not the building itself. It was only the last three years of their school career that they were in a new building. Yet, they're both successful adults in the careers, working in the careers that they chose. I'm here to ask you not to put the cart ahead of the horse. I urge that you think about the school building question before it's put on the ballot and deal with the facts, not emotions, and personal failings. None of us would personally sign a blank check to build a house on land that hasn't been approved for building, nor would we sign a blank check without knowing that the projected costs and with some certainty that we could fit it into our budget. So, how can we ask the citizens of Milton to vote on this right now? Overcrowding, especially at the middle school, needs to be addressed immediately. I ask that you look at some of the past suggestions that have been made in recent years to address this overcrowding. This can't wait for a new building to be approved or built. There are viable solutions in the near future, and I really hope that you look at those. I urge you not to prioritize a building over a highly regarded school system that we have in Milton. Can the Milton residents afford a new school building right now and an operational override that's projected to be asked for in next spring?
30 seconds.
We can't afford both. I've heard many of my fellow neighbors that say that they can't afford both. We have a great, we could end up with a great new building, but a subpar school system. Let's make sure that we don't financially overburden our residents who are living paycheck to paycheck or at fixed income. They are neighbors and valuable members of our community. Let's continue to be the diverse, inclusive community that we've become. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, sorry to chime in from remote, but I'm not sure if you can see. There's a couple of folks that are up online. I know traditionally we alternate with in-person and online comments.
Deference to so many because of so many people who've traveled to be here. So, I'm going to take. I can't. I can't see who it is. You want to pick?
Yep. The first person has raised their hand.
Nick Deuce here?
Yep.
Who is it?
The name's not listed online, but they are joining now. We can, when they rejoin us, just provide their name.
Is that the one here, school parent?
Yes.
So, would the person who identifies himself as school parent speak? You have to unmute yourself. Thank you.
Hi, that may have been me. I'm sorry.
That's you. That's you.
Okay. I'm here. Sorry. This is Michael McCarthy. I am a resident, 22 Holly Street. I am also a town meeting member for Precinct 6. I have three children. One is at Collycott. One is in the preschool at Cunningham and another who will be starting the preschool in another year. I'm also a lifelong resident of Milton. So, after living and working out of state for a number of years, my wife and I chose to move back home. We chose to move to Milton primarily, as one of our earlier speakers said, for the schools and the amenities in this town. And that is why I'm urging this body, as others have, to please move this question to the November ballot. First, I anticipate that some are going to say that it can't happen. We still need Beacon Hill to do the three readings in the Senate and in the House. And I'm getting a little wonky here. I apologize. But this simply is not true. So, I want to undercut that right now. I have spoken with multiple individuals well versed in this process, and there is no law that states that the town cannot vote on this school budget override without the site approved by Beacon Hill. So, please do not use that as a reason to not move this forward. And secondly, I know that cost will be as huge a topic as a previous speaker and resident just mentioned. But let me state clearly that every single day that we further delay this project, we indisputably raise the overall price tag of this project. That is indisputable. The cost has raised over the five years that we've been addressing this known problem. So, I view that as, at this point, negligence, plain and simple. To kick this can further down the road. If we are to build this school, now is the most cost-effective time. Yesterday was even more cost-effective. But tomorrow, it will be more expensive. But let me just give you a bit. I just want to give you a bit about what's happening from the perspective of a parent. Like I said, I have three small children. My older daughter, right now, she's at Collycott School, and I want to give a shout out to Principal Kinkanen. She's doing God's work, trying to keep those children in an acceptable learning environment. So, shout out to all of our school administrators for the work they're doing. My oldest daughter, right now, she eats her lunch at 10:30 in the morning. I don't know about anybody here, but that's brunch in my book. That is not lunchtime. That's concerning. It's concerning to me in a town like Milton. What's also concerning is in a town like Milton where a small colonial that needs fixing up can sell for $1 million. And I find it patently unacceptable the prospect of my children receiving services in a stairwell or trying to learn over the din of noise in a makeshift classroom with cubicle walls. This is not a new problem that has sprung out of nowhere. It's something we've known about. But what's most stunning is the lack of urgency that I sense and that I'm sensing from this board.
Can he hear me?
Please, I ask that we don't stand in the way of this project. Let the Milton voters decide the fate of this project. We should move forward with it now. So, it makes sense for Milton, makes sense for our children, and it makes sense for the quality of education in this town. So, I'll just give you that. The future is our children, and the future is bright. So, please support them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Who's your next one? I'll do one more. How much time do we have?
We have eight minutes.
I'll take one more online. Is this?
Travis Gregory.
Travis Gregory? If you could unmute. Travis Gregory? I see him. If you could just unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes. Good evening.
Thank you. Travis Gregory. I live at 45 Clifton Road. I am a town meeting member for Precinct 9. Let me start off. I'm speaking to you today in reference to the new school and the planning to get the vote on the November ballot. I have three children in the schools, Cunningham, all three, actually. And I'm going to start with urging you to allow this to be on the town ballot and to allow our citizens to have their voice heard and the opportunity to vote on this, whatever way they choose. I, for one, know the issues of displacement firsthand. Last year, my daughter was in a classroom in the library. I could tell you firsthand the troubles that that would cause from listening, comprehension, reading, understanding the lessons as a whole because of the constant noise interruptions that having fake walls in a library causes. We needed a tutor to assist in second grade, which really surprised me. And now that she's in a normal classroom, she has no issues. We need no tutors. She is doing 100% better in all of her comprehension, and her own self-esteem is gone up dramatically, being able to succeed in school. And that's all we want. We want our kids to succeed in school and not have the issues that she had. And I find this a priority, to have this be voted on for our town. So, I ask you to take a moment to think about it. Vote today or your next meeting or as soon as possible so we can get this on the ballot and that everybody can have their voice heard and have an opportunity to be part of this town. Thank you.
So, I have six minutes left for.
That is frontline?
That is it, frontline.
Mr. White.
Good evening. My name is Bill White. I live on 73 Plymouth Ave. I'm a lifelong townie. And I'm a precinct. I am, I was going to say precinct captain, but I'm a precinct town meeting member from Precinct 6. I wanted to just maybe shift a little bit and take a leap and assume maybe the majority of the Select Board understands both the urgency of building a new school to address Milton's overcrowding and recognizes the likelihood that the town will need its first operational override since 2017. If that assumption is true, and I hope it is, then the question is really how best to pass them both? Mr. Wells knows that I was forced by my dad at an early age to be working on campaigns. Since then, I have worked on numerous campaigns at the presidential level, statewide here in Massachusetts, and a good number of the Milton campaigns, including leading the campaign to complete the Cunningham and Collycott schools. In my judgment, putting both questions on the ballot together in the spring of 2025 likely leads to one, quite possibly, both questions going down to defeat. Why? The first is operational. How will you organize a campaign for both? Will you have two campaigns with two fundraising arms, two organizational arms, two messaging arms? Maybe there's an attempt to form a single unified effort. How will the message be reconciled and simply explained? How will the arguments of opponents be adequately addressed? Voters will be inundated with complex and challenging details. And as a result, the campaign will be less effective than for a single issue, and the risk of failure, especially for the school building override, will be greater. Just imagine a Milton voter goes into the voting booth and is asked to approve a one-time tax increase of possibly, I mean, you guys tell me, but let's say $5 million so that the town does not have to lay off fire, police, and teachers. And if they take that leap, is it likely they will then look positively to a second ballot on the same day in the same election that asks them to approve another significant, longer-term tax increase? I think that's unfair to the Milton voters and will be too much to digest at once. However, letting the residents of Milton vote on a new school as part of the upcoming presidential election in November, first, will give Milton voters the opportunity to focus on the overcrowding crisis and make a thoughtful judgment. Again, if the majority of the Select Board want to pass both overrides, look no further than the electoral outcomes of the past two November presidential elections. In 2016, turnout in Milton was 88% across every precinct. I think the worst precinct was Precinct 5. It was at 85%. In 2020, the turnout was 85% during a pandemic. And the Democratic candidates during those elections in 2016, she won 68% of the vote. And President Biden in 2021, 73% of the vote. Well, I'm no political scientist. It seems highly likely that these huge margins put in well for a November electorate that will be supportive of public education and attentive to the needs for a new school. There is a fantastic new generation of leaders that are ready to lead a campaign. You heard some of them tonight for a new school this November, and I'm committed to supporting them, although I'm retired from running them. None of this, none of this will be easy. I think we all know that. But I'm convinced a new school vote is likely to pass this November, will help unify the town, will build energy, momentum, and organization for the passage of a needed department-wide override in the spring of 2025. Thank you for your public service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Three minutes. So, I have three minutes left and two speakers. You decide. Sebastian or Jessica? Those are the two. I have enough time for one more speaker.
I'll try to be brief.
Yeah, you have three minutes. You got it. I'll let you know.
My name is Sebastian Barbagala. I'm going to skip the part about.
Skip the spelling part.
My kids, yeah. My kids being in school. How, my daughter's one of 26, and we all know the merits of building a new school. So, I want to get to my main concern, which is cost escalation. My professional life. I worked for a construction management company. I specialize in preconstruction, which is primarily budgeting, planning, and procurement. I can say unequivocally that the past, five years ago, this project would have cost 25 or 30% less than it would cost today. And every year that we wait was 5% to 6% more. So, two years from now, this project's going to cost 10% to 12% more than it will cost today. So, I, one of three things always happens in this process and these projects. I work on these projects from $10 million to $110 million all day, every day. One of three things is going to happen. We're going to pay more for the same school. We're going to pay the same amount of money for a worse school or a smaller school, or we're going to do nothing, and we're going to have to keep on waiting longer. And frankly, our kids can't afford to wait any longer. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Two minutes.
Jessica? I have a minute. I've told, don't, have I? I know what he said. I'm going to hold on. I'm totally, if you notice, I'm.
I'll be brief. I think.
Good evening.
She has 26 children in her class, and the first day that we met, you know, her first grade teacher, she said to us, we need you parents to do something about this. She said, we can't continue on like this. This is too much. They can't, you know, they can't function well in these classrooms with 26 children and, and no help. So, you know, I stand here, you know, as someone who is representing the teachers, who asked me to help, give her a help. I joined town meeting. I am precinct six member. I apologize, I didn't say that to begin with, trying to go quickly here, but, so I joined to try and help and, you know, get, please, you know, get this on the vote for our children. Thank you.
You can have the pen. We can, we can give you a pen. So that concludes Citizen Speak for tonight. This is not on our agenda for tonight. So the one thing I will say on behalf of the board, and especially myself, this is not unfamiliar to us. When you get in this role, and for those of you who are in the room who have been in elected office, particularly townwide office in this town, it's very difficult. We are, it's not a question, I don't think any of us dispute the question of the fact that you need.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Zoll.
Sorry, it sounds like we're going into Citizen Speak response, and I think that's not a bad idea.
I did think of that.
If we wanna move that up on the agenda, but I was also going to suggest we might move up the town administrators' remarks as well, because I know he was tasked at the last meeting with connecting with Senator Timmelti about the progress at State House. So I'm fine if we wanna move up Citizen Speak response, but I think if, if we do, then it should probably be all of us that get to respond. Thank you.
So why don't I do this? Why don't I just, let's, because we're very limited on what we can say about this tonight in Citizen Speak response, because, as you know, this is very complicated for us. So I will do that. I'm gonna pass on Citizen Speak response and move up Mr. Milano's aspect, and we can go back to it, of town administrators' report, at least on the correspondence that he's had this week with the State House, if that's okay. Is that all right?
Was he making a motion?
No, I don't think you have to move, I'm just gonna move it up on the agenda. Oh, you wanna make, oh, you wanna, was that a motion, Ben? You wanna make that as a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll move that we move up the town administrators' report in Citizen Speak response, because it sounds like you guys have a pretty big crowd there. It might be nice for them to hear a response before they, they go home. But I'll, I'll motion to move both of those things, and if you prefer to have the town administrators' response first, I'd, I'd make that motion. Thank you.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. We have to roll call because you're not here, Mr. Zoll. Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Myself, yes, and Mr. Zoll.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Milano.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I did reach out to Senator Timmelti's office. He responded just with general update that the legislation was filed upon receipt at the beginning of this year. It has received, has received approval from the committee and is awaiting a third reading in the Senate. He noted that he's been in touch with representatives at EEA to encourage and urge that it move forward and has expressed a willingness to continue to help the town in these efforts. I'll just note, kind of for some additional background on this, is that we started working with EEA long before a land swap went to town meeting, but especially after it was approved at town meeting last year. We held a call with them in the fall. We submitted the legislation to the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for their feedback and comments. We received those comments. We submitted the draft legislation to Senator Timmelti's office for him to share with Senate Council's office to review and provide comments, which we have done. We have tried to have this legislation drafted and ready to go before it was finalized, so we had those approvals done before it was submitted for the legislature to take consideration on. And the other element that we worked on over the past several months was satisfying the other requirements to submit this legislation, which are an appraisal of the land being swapped or exchanged, and an alternatives analysis, which was carried up by the School Building Committee. The Public Lands Preservation Act, which is what we now have to submit Article 97 land swaps under, requires that the legislation be submitted, both the appraisal with the alternatives analysis, and also a report from EEA, which we still have yet to receive on, on whether it should move forward. So at this point, it is with awaiting approval from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. We continue to reach out and solicit feedback, questions, comments, concerns on the legislation. We haven't heard anything, and that's where it stands from my perspective. There are, you know, another seven to eight weeks left in the legislative session before the session heads into recess at the end of July. I think that's what I wanted to cover, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Members? Ms. Bradley, I was though giving a little nudge today as to that, because it's not on our agenda, that we just be.
I just would just like to speak about the process of the legislative bills, because somebody had mentioned that earlier, and I just wanted to clarify kind of where we're at. First of all, bills are, they, they go through a very funky process. They're read three times in the Senate, they go to the House, they're read three times there, and then they toggle back and forth between the House and the Senate. They're first engrossed, and then they're enacted. So right now, you've got one more step in the Senate for it to be read the third time, then it goes to the House for three readings there, and then we toggle back and forth. So right now, I, I, you know, appreciate, I received an email from Senator Timmelti. I appreciate what he has said. I would just like folks to be 100% clear on what the steps are and who we can contact in our delegation, because I think this last step in the Senate, we don't need to have EEA letters about that, because then it goes to the House and they can start their process before that happens. I also want folks to know that this can still happen even after Senate, even after the Senate, the session is done on July 31st. Things can be engrossed and enacted all the way through to December 31st of this year. However, all it would take was one person standing up to object to that happening, but it is a possibility for this to continue on through the rest of this calendar year, just so folks are 100% aware. I also wanted to note that I have received up to 40 emails about this specific situation, and I appreciate all the emails, and I appreciate everyone who has come to speak here tonight. I formally would like to ask you, Mr. Chair, that this be put on our agenda for the next meeting so that we may actually discuss it, seeing as the outcry of our residents and listening to our residents is at a crescendo at this point. So I would appreciate your consideration of that, and thank you.
Mr. Cohen, Ms. Musto?
Mr. Chair, can I, could I ask a question for Mr. Milano real quick, and Ms. Bradley may have the answer to that, to this as well, but it's a question about the legislative process.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Just do me a favor.
Does the E, does the third hearing in the Senate depend on the EEA coming back with a report, or could the third hearing in the Senate be done without that report? That's just a yes or no question.
Our understanding that, that has been described to us is that for land swap legislation in particular, under the Public Lands Preservation Act, is that they are awaiting a response from EEA at this stage before proceeding through the legislative process. I don't think that, that's not written necessarily in law or, or in rules anywhere. I think that's just been their practice, and that is what I referenced in terms of awaiting further feedback from EEA, is that has been described to us, that at this stage they will weigh in on the land swap itself.
Can I ask a quick follow-up, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Mr. Milano, is there a way for citizens of Milton who are concerned about this, residents of Milton who are concerned about the fact that the EEA hasn't come back yet, to reach out to the EEA and encourage them to finish their report in a timely fashion?
I don't know the answer to that question. It's, it's through the governor's office, might be the best route. I don't wanna misspeak on that, but I'm not quite sure of the best way to advocate if folks wanted to, to an executive agency. So I'll defer to somebody else who might have an answer.
So one thing, Mr. Zoll, that we did, that I did learn this week is, and, because I was unaware of this, was that there was so much testimony taken during whatever hearings they conducted, that's part of what they're waiting through. And it's not common that they get that much testimony in a case like this. And I understand that's part of the reason, that there was so much, and I was unaware that that had even taken place.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wonder if they've heard from a certain group of folks that have particular opinions about this, but they haven't heard from others, and that makes me wonder how folks who, you know, this was passed with a two-thirds majority in town meeting, so obviously it had a broad support across the town. So I think it would be worth finding out for, for folks how they could reach out, and just for anyone who's listening, I'll, I'll reach out to the governor's office tomorrow and find out if there's a, a good way for, for folks to chime in. But, Mr. Milano, if you find out anything also, it'd be wonderful to, to hear from you, how people can, can chime in about this, because obviously, there's a lot of concern about this, and, and I understand why, because as was alluded to, this has been something that we've been working on for five years, and we're on a ticking clock with construction costs, as, as has been noted. So, you know, I, I appreciate everyone, like Ms. Bradley alluded to earlier, that's emailed that cares about this, emails that have come from a lot of folks who don't have kids that would benefit from this, like myself. My kids are not gonna see the benefits of this, but they still wanna understand the base value that schools have for community, for its property values, and for all of the services that they provide. So I, I will be very, I, I will be looking myself, and if folks are interested and wanna contact me, I will share what I find out. But, Mr. Milano, I might, might suggest maybe, Mr. Chair, that we could ask Mr. Milano to find out specifically how citizens can contact the EEA, because I appreciate their contacting us, but I think they may wanna also contact other members of the process that could potentially help move things along. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zoll. Ms. Bradley?
I would like to respond to Mr. Zoll's questions that he just posed, if that's okay.
Okay.
It's public information, all of those, that testimony is all public information, so anybody can request that testimony. They did receive a lot, Mr. Zoll, and it was all one-sided pretty much. It is also a public agency, so folks can contact the, the, right now, it looks like all they have listed is the communications people on the EEA website, but you absolutely can reach out to them through email, through telephone. They're at 100 Cambridge Street in Boston. It's a public office, and you can, as public servants, we can do, we can, anybody can contact anyone. So I would suggest that folks, if this is what's holding it up, which I don't believe that it is a holdup, there's no written rule, as Mr. Milano said, that they need the EEA response on the Senate side, they can absolutely get it on the House side, there is no reason why they cannot, because then, as I said, it goes through four steps of engrossment and enactment, and at any point in time, the House or the Senate can stop that process. So please do reach out to your public servants and ask them to move this along.
Anybody else? We good? Mr. Zoll? You're not moving there. All good?
I'm, I'm fine, Mr. Chair, thank you. I, I do echo Ms. Bradley's comment that I think that this should be on the agenda for our next meeting.
It's not till December. All right. Thank you all. Thank you. We're going to move into the remainder of our agenda, all 25 items. Okay. We're gonna go to item four. Discussion with Vance Welch regarding primary design plans for a new restaurant at the Fruit Center, also known as 10 Bassett Street. I see Mrs. McGetrick here, Mr. Welch, I see, I recognize you by face. Good evening. Counselor? Another counselor? No, I'm talking to the counselor behind you.
Good evening, everyone. As you just read the agenda item, I'm Mary Ann McHattick. The reason I'm here tonight is that I expect that I will be, if, if there's a new restaurant proposal by these proponents at the Fruit Center, that I would be working with them on that proposal. Tonight, we have Vance Welch and Stephen Tardisco. Stephen Tardisco is a designer, and so before coming to you with any kind of formal proposal, we thought the first step should be for Steve Tardisco to come in and show you what some of his concepts are for a restaurant at the Fruit Center. As you know, the plate has closed, the Fruit Center is interested in a restaurant that's open more hours, but beyond that, there's more space than there used to be, because there's a space that's been converted. So this would mean there might be some changes in the way the restaurant would be laid out and what type of restaurant it would be. This restaurant, the current restaurant does have a liquor license. A new liquor license application would be required for a new restaurant. That would be coming before your board. That's a separate app, you know, that's a more detailed application, but the requirements of such an application include showing the layout of the restaurant, the seating capacity, the design, if there's a bar, how the bar is set up, how the liquor service would be provided, et cetera. So that all relates to design. A good first step, seems to me at least, would be to talk about design, and we appreciate the opportunity to come to this board tonight in a public meeting and show you what some of the ideas are that Vance Welch and Steve Tardisco have. The purpose of this is to get feedback, so we're not expecting a long discussion by your board tonight, but I'm hoping the public is watching this meeting and that you will get feedback and will get feedback, because that's how you create a better proposal. So, thank you. What we have tonight are drawings, but we're gonna ask Steve to explain the concept.
So no, you're not using PowerPoint or anything?
I don't think there's an electronic.
Nothing electronic? Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Old-fashioned.
That's a little difficult in a setting.
If life could just be old-fashioned a lot more than. You're gonna sit, actually, you're gonna pick up that microphone while you're.
It's kinda heavy. So you want me to hold the drawings or you?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, you can't go there. That's a good idea. So if you just speak on, yeah, good there. Go ahead.
I'll do it both ways, so you'll be here.
Is this on?
It's on.
It's on. You don't have to do anything, just talk into it.
Okay. I'm sure you're all familiar with the Fruit Center, and this, we were presented with this opportunity several months ago, Vance and I, to convert the plate, and the, this at one point in time was the existing roof deck, and Fruit Center Group enclosed that with a, a structure. I'm sure you've all, you've all seen it with the, and there's an exterior stair that was just completed into the space. So our, the challenge here was to take these two separate spaces and sort of pull them together, and also, you know, dealing with the circulation of the so-called mall.
Yeah.
And with the shops, the queue, and then the children's store down at the other end. So what we, what we're proposing here is, in this new space, is a, a bar, full bar, and with some, you know, some peripheral seating, and the, all these windows you see here and here are all folding windows, so they all open up, so it gives you an outdoor experience, which is very nice. And then we, and then this space here with the existing plate, basically, we're proposing a, a pizza oven. We're calling it a pizza sandwich bar over here, and then the, right, so this is where you enter the, the plate now. So what we're proposing here are folding doors, so this all opens up, folding doors here, this all opens up, and then this is a service corridor to get the food from the existing kitchen to the new bar. And so this opens up also, so what that, essentially what that does, it just makes this all part of the restaurant. So when you, when you, when you enter, you, it's, now there's three ways to get into this restaurant, this stair, this stair, and the, the elevator. So once you're in this area, basically, you're in the restaurant. So this all opens up, this is all transparent now, so it's not as closed off as it is now. And, you know, we're also gonna be talking about, excuse me, the, the existing, you know, finishes, we're gonna lighten everything up. We have a lot of natural light coming in here, we're just gonna play that up as much as we can, and this little deck here, area there, we're gonna do a little display garden, which is, would be visible throughout the, the entire space. So the goal here was just to open this all up, so you just sort of, it's like a free, free-flowing space, and also, you know, and, and it would also enhance the, the experience of the, of the shops. I think that's pretty much it. The seating? Yeah, the seating, this was, this was approved of 49 seats under the permit that was pulled by the Fruit Center, and then believe here, that this was another, in total, 99 seats. That's what we're looking at. And we have bathrooms here to facilitate the, the, the restaurant. We have two bathrooms here and two bathrooms there. So we did the code, we did the code analysis, and that all meets the, you know, the code as far as numbers of seats versus fixtures.
Steve, can you, well, the interior as we know it now, will it change as you're already walking here? Is it a little different?
Oh, yeah, no, the whole, the whole space, it's, it's, excuse me.
I know, sorry.
Oh, microphone.
I'm gonna redo my question.
Oh, so.
No, what we're, what we're doing in here, what we're doing, well, you know, I mean, right now, as it exists, they're very dark colors, it's in dark oranges, it's blacks, and it's all kinds. So basically, we're, there's a lot of natural light coming in here, but it gets absorbed by these, these dark colors. So we're gonna, basically, we're gonna just lighten everything up, you know. I, I don't have, I don't, can't give you the exact color, but they're gonna be more, you know, light. Everything's light. The idea of this thing is just to bring a lot of natural light in, and, and just make it light near as possible. So, and it'll be, you know, be some booths here, and these booths will be accessible from both sides. So again, it was just, we're playing up, the, the whole concept here is the transparency and natural light. So, and as far as, you know, specific colors go, we're still, you know, we're still, you know, a few weeks away from that at this point, but we're moving ahead, you know, we're moving along with the drawings in terms of, you know, design, dealing with the design issues.
Mr. Zoll, can you see this at all? Can you see this from where you are at? Can he? Can he or not?
No, Mr. Chair, that was, my first question was gonna be if, if I could get emailed some of these images at some point.
So if you could email, Mrs. McGetrick, if you could maybe email that to us, so that at least.
I can.
Appreciate that, Mr. Chair.
He's making you a video.
Okay.
Mr. Milano's making you a video right now.
Thank you, Nick. That's very enterprising of you. Appreciate it.
No, he's trying, so I, I'll make sure that, we'll, we'll make sure that that.
We'll follow up with an, with an, this is just initial chance to take feedback from you, to give you some general idea of what's being looked at. We'll have to do an electronic, we'll, we'll scan this, and we'll send that to the board, and then it can be made available on your website in whatever way you wanna make it available. Just, it's a preliminary concept plan. Just wanna make that clear, this is not an application at this point. So, anyway, we just didn't happen to have that with us in that form tonight.
Questions? Comments? Ms. Bradley?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I had two quick comments, or questions. One, if somebody's at the bar and they're walking to the restaurant, can they bring their drinks with them? So will you close off the two-side going to the toy shop or to the queue? Or do you have to, you can only stay in one part of the restaurant at one time? Do you understand what I'm saying? Like, most restaurants, you can walk around with your drink and like, you know, I can Like, most restaurants, you can walk around with your drink and like, you know, I can move, like, for example, in Abbey Park, I can move from the bar over to a table. Are we suggesting that we can do that here? And if so, are we going to close off those two sides? Because that would make sense.
When you, I don't understand, when you say close off.
Yeah, so that it's actually one restaurant. Because right now, you've got other side shoots.
Yeah, we have a tenant here and we have a tenant down there. And, you know, so, I mean, the idea here was, well, yeah, it's a good question, but the, the way the flow works, I mean, we wouldn't be able to shut this off, of course, because he's talking about maybe putting doors there or something.
So you, you mentioned that you have sliding doors at the other spots, right?
Yeah, there's sliding doors. These are accordion doors.
Correct. So the question is...
Right here and here. So the flow, you say, the flow would work right through here.
But if I had a drink in my hand and I was walking from one side to another, I could also take a left and go to the queue unless there was an accordion door there stopping me from doing that. That's my, Ms. McHattrick, do you understand what I'm asking?
Yeah, no, I understand. There would be no door to stop you.
There wouldn't be nothing?
No.
Okay. So I can walk freely around the upstairs with alcohol?
You could do that previously.
Yeah.
From the plate, you could do that. If you went outside, you could go, you took it from the main pot. It was seasonal because it was summer, but you could take it...
Right, but now we're doing one restaurant. Do you see what I'm saying?
The plate was one restaurant, but it just, you took it, you did exactly what you're saying.
I don't know that you could leave the restaurant with the drink. With alcoholic beverage?
To the, to the, so they didn't have, they didn't, you could go from where you bought it in the main pot and bring it out with you to what is, what they're proposing is those seats now. They had tables and patios up there.
Currently? Or previously?
That's how it was.
So you could walk around with alcohol?
You could walk from where you purchased it into the, into where you drank it.
But what if I wanted to take a detour? I could do that, too.
You could probably do that in a million places. You could do that, I mean, you could do it at the social plaza, walk out of...
Walk out of Davio's with it. You're right, you're right. Unless somebody stopped me at the door. Okay. So the, yeah, I get, all right, I understand. Okay, thank you for that. That makes a little bit more sense.
Okay.
And then my second question was, is that roof deck what was paid for with ARPA money that was provided to that, to the plate?
No, that's a, that's a Milton Fruit Center project.
That's a Fruit Center project.
It's a Fruit Center, so it was not, I'm just looking at Nick. That was not the ARPA money. Awesome, thank you. Much to question answered. All easy peasy. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Zoll, you can sit, Mr. Cohen, go ahead.
Again, just...
You're in trouble now. The builder's going to ask you some questions. I just said, you're in trouble now. The builder is going to ask some questions.
This is a bigger question than the layout. This is just what I'm hearing. And what I'm hearing is that, that the original liquor license was given to the plate because of their hours and the fact that the alcohol was not a focus. And now it will be a focus. Plate owners stayed true to their word. This new restaurant's a totally different animal compared to the plate. And again, I'm just listening to what I'm hearing. And the other, I don't know how parking is addressed, but the other issue that I'm hearing about is go there on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights, and East Milton Square is just a nightmare. You can't find a parking space everywhere. So what, where, how does this parking get accommodated for this place?
So that won't be before, Ms. McHattrick, are you going GBA on this? Or you're going to, who are you bringing this before to get your approvals? I know we'll approve the transfer of the liquor license, but where are you going?
The question is whether the, I don't have the answer tonight, but that's why I'm here. We're getting questions, basically. Is whether the existing permits issued to the Fruit Center and whatever tenants they have cover enough of this restaurant proposal that we wouldn't need to go to the Board of Appeals with the, with the Fruit Center beside us? Or the Fruit Center would need to go to the Board of Appeals? I don't know the answer to that yet. I have really just begun to look at this. And of course, they have their own attorney who has represented them with the Board of Appeals. So we'll continue to look at that question if we do need to go to the Board of Appeals. We would, you know, for other restaurants which were entirely new, certainly, it had to be a Board of Appeals application. The nature of the relief required, again, depends on the circumstances. And parking could be an issue. But it depends on what kind of parking is currently allowed to the Fruit Center for what uses and what the numbers are. And that's, at this point, that's as much as I can tell you about what would have to be further examined. So there could be a Board of Appeals application, certainly. If there's one necessary, there will be. Your liquor license application covers quite a lot. It certainly covers seating, alcohol service, hours, layout. And I don't know that we've, we do get into discussions sometimes about parking capacity indirectly in those licenses as well. So it's definitely going to have to be discussed and addressed. We're not here really to propose any of those things now. Because I think that the basic questions you just asked, those are things that we need to think about. This is an interesting layout. Having, there has been seating. The plate used it across the hall, and they did have a liquor license. They used it in a more limited fashion. That's correct. That was a different type of restaurant. So those are all things that we want to hear from people about. And obviously, you're already hearing from some people. You know, certainly through the Board of Selectmen will be happy to pick up any feedback that you get. Most people, some people at least know who I am. My, my email address is just mmcetrick@gmail.com. We'd be happy to get feedback directly. We'll make it all available to everybody, including the select board, if we do get that from the public. And we don't know what the next steps will be. We want to wait and see, you know, first of all, whether we can answer questions that come up at this stage.
So, so I do know...
Mr. Chair, could I chime in with a question, too? Sorry.
Oh, yes.
Thank you. And thank you, Nick, for taking a picture of this, which you can see on the screen now. I have been able to study this. So it, it looks to me like there's about 90 seats in this. And maybe that was, that number got dropped in the, in the presentation as well. But, you know, 90 seats, if we want to be generous and say that, you know, three people per car at the restaurant, that's still 30 cars of parking, which is not a small number. So, you know, I, for one, am in favor of new business in this town whenever we can get it because we need more commercial revenue, straight up. Like, we've, we've heard already about, you know, what's coming down the pike. And we are going to need to make sure that Milton doesn't have 94% of its tax dollars coming from residential taxes. So I'm inclined to look favorably upon this. But I do think that there are some questions about the specific layout here and the, and the overall volume. Because, you know, East Milton is popular. If you go to the bar at any of those restaurants in East Milton, they're crowded. And I expect that this bar will be crowded as well. And so I just, I would really want to make sure that we had a good traffic feasibility study because I think anybody who's pulled out, tried to pull out from the Fruit Center at rush hour has, you know, probably lost more hair than I've lost in the last 10 years just trying to get out of that parking lot. So I, I'm glad that you're here early and you're presenting us with some ideas. For me, traffic feasibility is going to be a big one. I would love to see also, you know, plans of how do, how do we incentivize folks to maybe take a bike or walk to the restaurant instead of driving? But like I said, first and foremost, I'm concerned with the tax base in Milton and making sure that we have more commercial revenue. So, so thank you for bringing this to our attention on the early side. And I look forward to seeing how this develops.
Ms. Musto?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zoll.
So it's, is it 90, 90 seats total? Is that what we're thinking? I'm sorry?
99.
99? Just under 100. And what is the capacity of those areas? I mean, if you had standing, if you don't, is that seating? The actual seat number?
Seating.
So...
Most, most of what? Most of everything else that we're talking about, including parking capacity, you know, layout, liquor license, everything, it relates to seats, number of seats. And you do count the seats in the bar. So all those seats around the bar are part of the 99 seats. And there are rules about having to serve food with liquor and so on, so forth. I'm sorry, go ahead.
And the second question is, I know it's not really part of this, but what hours are you anticipating that you would be open?
Similar hours that we keep in East Milton Square.
So for people that are watching, what would that be?
We're, we're open for lunch, brunch, and dinner.
Okay. And what time do you close?
12 o'clock is the latest.
Okay.
Could he get a little closer to the microphone? I couldn't hear any of those.
He said 12 o'clock is the latest they ever stay open in any of their restaurants.
Thank you.
Thank you.
12 o'clock? That was for you, Mr. Zoll. He just gave a second 12 o'clock.
The liquor licenses require that liquor service stop sooner than that. There's a lot more detail to the hours. But in terms of the last person seated in the restaurant, I believe 12 is the latest that any of them are open right now. I just want to address very briefly the parking issue and explain what it is we're going to be looking at. First of all, we're going to be looking at the seating capacity at the plate now and the hours that the plate was open. This is, there is shared parking among Fruit Center and other commercial businesses and the restaurant. So it's a shared parking area. So you also have to look at the hours of all the businesses, when they're open, when they close. If this restaurant will be open after the other businesses close, does that change the parking situation? Does that change the seating capacity or something? I mean, I have never heard of doing it that way, but, so it, it's not a simple answer. It's not, this is how many seats we have and this is how many parking spaces there are in the parking lot. We will come back with that type of information. And I'm sure everyone's going to be very interested in hearing about it, but that's an important question. How will the parking lot be able to accommodate the number of possible patrons at this restaurant during the hours that they would like to be open? And then does that require some kind of discussion back and forth? Should there be modifications or not? I don't know. Is it feasible to even do, you know, given all of these factors? So, thank you. It's an excellent question.
One more?
You can...
Thank you.
Business is, business is good. But if we're going to have business in East Milton, we need to deal with the parking problem. For, for businesses' sake also, because it's just getting to the point. And we're going to, with the residences in East Milton, I walked through there, there's 46 parking spaces in there. So there's 46 parking spaces that go.
You mean that belong to us?
Huh?
That belong to us? You're talking about the town spaces?
No, the, the spaces that are behind Abbey Park right now.
Oh, behind Abbey Park?
Those parking spaces. I mean, they're not all labeled parking spaces, but if you count 40, count parking spots, there's 46 of them in there. And those are going to go. So, you know, this problem is, it'll be a problem for businesses, too. People don't have a place to park. It's, it's a serious problem and...
It's not one we haven't discussed in the past.
I'm sure, I'm sure, but every day it gets worse. So, anyway, my comments.
A couple of points. So the liquor licenses are all standardized amongst every bar. And we did, prior board, we did that probably five or six years ago because they were all different. Mrs. McHattrick, I mean, they were like, you got this much and you got that much. And it just, the statute's clear, 131. So we standardized them all. If my memory's correct, the plate was the last one we gave, was the last liquor license we gave. They did apply, it was their intention to reopen at night. She just opted not to. She did have that right. She, you're correct. She didn't, she did not exercise her liquor license to the legal ability she had, but she, we thought she would have done that when she did it. I'm not sure, to Mr. Zoll's point about the gain in seating, I'd have to look because I don't have the points. Because it looks like the tables on the left are the same. The counter, which was previously the walk-up counter at, and the coffee aisle in the, the middle here by the kitchen is now going to become seating. And I'm not sure, I'm not sure exactly how many seats and tables were out on that terrace. There were tables, and that was part of, that had been there for a few years now. I think, I think that might even started with COVID. We started, I think we approved that. So I, I'm in agreeance with my colleagues on this. You know, we appreciate you coming in. East Milton Square is always, the one benefit that you have is you've been in existence there now for over a decade. And at least for me, who now lives in East Milton Square, and to Mr. Zoll's point, I think people would be shocked with how many people do walk and ride bikes there. It's kind of an amazing thing. It's very rare that I drive to East Milton Square anymore. I walk almost for everything and should, John. Same thing. It's just, it's a, it's a unique amenity that I never would have experienced had I not moved back there in 2015. So I don't think we need to, I think you guys know what you need to do, what you come, need to come back before us with. You know, we, we did, we have known as, Mr. Cohen, we knew something was going to, and we did learn that it was, you know, you're, you've got a track record in this community and you know what it is. And like, we'll be here to discuss it with you. So wherever you go with, you know, absent the liquor license, that is not within our jurisdiction, that's up to you. That's not our, I'm a stay in your lane kind of guy.
One last...
Go ahead.
People will take, use these things to express their concerns again.
He knows, they know.
I know you know, you know, but that's basically what happens, you know?
I think we know that, and that's why we're here early.
Yeah.
Because it's much easier to get the dialogue going early. And those things that we can address adequately, it will make, it will make for better, better proposal, but a much better process, I hope, for everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
And we'll, you have your drawing, but we'll send a better electronic copy.
Go ahead.
Just a very quick question. It's very quick. Just wondering what your timeline is?
What's your timeline?
Next Tuesday? John needs someone to go for lunch.
It's not, it's not final in any way. So there's all kinds of elements to this. There's negotiation with the Fruit Center. There has to be a lease. There, there are elements of the liquor license. I have to do some research, of course, on whether there's further permitting. In terms of plans and getting them ready, I'll let you talk about that, Vance.
Well, I mean, we're, the, the project itself, it could, we're pretty far along as far as the negotiations go. I think that we've settled that. You know, the plate left about a week ago, so now we can, we can move forward a lot quicker. And we're just waiting on, you know, approvals from the town and then the process of making sure we can get a liquor license. If that...
I was just thinking, is it going to be, are we thinking like three months or?
We could, we could do it. We could be, we could probably finish the project barring any interruptions in the fall. That would be ideal.
Thank you.
Ms. Bradley, I see you.
No. I'm excited for new business. Let's go.
You heard that?
Yeah.
I didn't say it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care. Thank you. Okay. Item five is deferred. Item six is a discussion update. The town administrator, and I do believe I see our illustrious town accountant here. I don't know if she's coming up on this. If you need her on this, I just, he just said support to me. support to me. To discuss the FY '26 budget and a preliminary forecast.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if the board would be interested, but Joan Clifford from the Milton Arts Center is here.
Oh yeah, my bad, my bad.
That's item eight.
So we're going to jump up to item eight and Mr. Danbruch and Ms. Clifford, if you would like to come up before us. Get to my, wow, it's three pages away. We have a lot of work left to do tonight. So goes our speedy, early finish, we're still going to be done by nine, I'm telling you. Okay, good evening.
Hello, everyone. Joan Clifford, is that?
Yeah.
That's better?
Yeah, you're good.
Joan Clifford, Kevin Danbruch from the Milton Arts Center, asking for approval for a driveway in the backyard off of Hollis Street so that we can park two cars? And anybody have questions?
I circulated to the board a proposed first amendment to the lease agreement that would recognize the capital investment that the Art Center would be making into the facility and thereby abate rent payments in accordance with the cost. That is something that we had discussed previously with the board and neglected to follow through on it. So that's proposed language. I know that they have been in touch with a few contractors to get pricing and have somebody they've been interested in, but that's the proposed amendment. The Art Center is required under their lease to do the kind of annual maintenance and repairs up to $12,000. Anything beyond that is the town's obligation and they have undertaken the projects when they've come up and performed the routine maintenance in accordance with their lease. This is a little bit bigger in terms of price tag and then in terms of long-term benefit for that property. So that's the nature of the proposal and I think, I don't think there's much else we need to add, but we're obviously available for questions.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion and then you can ask questions.
Oh, good, no, go ahead, go ahead.
I move to approve the first amendment to the lease agreement with the Milton Arts Center, addresses 334 Edge Hill Road.
I'll second that.
Seconded that by Mr. Zoll. Okay, for purposes of discussion, could I ask for a friendly amendment to your amendment? So I'm just, because they have significant money sitting in there, could we split it? 8,500 from their rent and 8,500 we take it out of the revolving fund to pay for it?
Is that...
That would, that's very generous, I'm sure.
Then yes, I would accept that.
I would second that. I would accept that too.
As long as, yes?
Oh, yeah, I mean...
Okay, yes, then yes, I accept that.
Great, thank you.
Wait a minute, Mr. Cohen?
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
And I'm new and I'm not familiar with all this, but we're increasing the value, but yet decreasing the rent. How does that work?
No, no. So they, the way it is, they were, they're going to do it.
Forgive me, but...
So they were going, we were going to take it from their rent, the entire thing, but we have money, their rent goes into a revolving fund specifically for that building, which from my memory, we haven't touched no longer. I don't know if we've ever touched it. So my thought was to split it, reduce their rent by 8,500 and take it from the revolving fund. Now, part of the caveat is, if we do this, it's up to prevailing wage, the RFP, the whole thing, it's better off to let them do this. Cost increases, the whole process increases. We're only lucky that we can do this because they do have this revolving fund that is specified to go back into their property, which we never touched.
I'm just thinking, it's like, you know, people rented a 5,000 square foot building and now they're going to add 500 square feet to it and we're going to decrease the rent.
So further, no, 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 we're not doing, we're using the rent to offset the, we're getting, there's a benefit coming down. This, for the record, this parking back here has been a discussion for as long as I can remember. And we're finally going to do it.
We should have talked about this offline.
I suggest, take a walk and you'll see why. Go ahead, Ms. Musto.
Two things, so this would just be for one time?
Yes.
Money. And then the second thing is for the striping and for the handicap accessibility, who will do that?
So I did think of that today. Did you include that in your specs?
Well, you know, Bill Ritchie actually looked at the project with Bannon Corporation and they talked about that in terms of, that's why they're going to level the walkway around the Art Center, you know, it is paved, but it's been cut through a few times. So they're, they're going to level that out. So I think automatically that would be better. That discussion about handicapped, you know, a while back, when we first proposed a driveway, it became a parking lot discussion.
I remember.
And there was, there was more, the plan had that kind of detail in it for handicapped accessibility and all sorts of that. This is really kind of a working driveway in terms of what we're hoping to do is just indicate to people not to block the bottom of it and so that it allows teachers, you know, it's going to be just parking for two people and it's really just the people who work there. Although, you know, parents who drop off kids, anybody who comes is welcome to park there, but it's going to be just two, two parking spots. And the rest of it is, you know, you park on the grass. So, you know, that's not even handicapped accessible, but if people, they do it, you know, so, you know, we just say things like, we, we don't, you park at your own risk, honestly, is basically what it is.
As it stands right now, there are two spots right at the end of the driveway with a sign, this is no parking, but people ignore that, park there for a few minutes to run into the post office. And oftentimes, there might be two cars that park there that just block access to that for anybody to get into the property at all, including occasionally postal trucks that will park there for a while, so, but that's a whole nother topic.
So since you're on that, since you're on that topic and it's not on the agenda, Ms. Milano, I did talk about that, this is going on the agenda to ask them, he's reaching out to contact them and we're going to ask, if they do not correct this, we're going to bring them in before us and you can come and speak that night if you want.
I'll be there.
I may sit on this side of the table then.
I'm really happy to hear you say that because I've been trying to get this fixed and talking to Mr. Milano about it, so this has been a huge thing.
Me too.
Being my bonnet, that I drive by it all out of the night.
Every day.
And see those trucks. And in fact, I was there on Friday and I counted at least nine postal trucks there.
In front of the, right.
In front of the Milton Arts Center, so...
And the police have tagged them repeatedly and there's a caveat in the law, that you can only tag on the call off the vehicle that has a license plate and mail vehicles do not have one.
But to bring it back to the current discussion. No, believe me, I'm happy to talk about the postal trucks.
This is a favorite discussion.
Yeah, yeah.
I know this, I already knew.
But with the clear-cut driveway, people would, would not stop there and run into the post office, it would be left open for people to come in to access the Art Center if they need to.
Yes, because now it would be definitive versus when you look at it.
Right.
In its current state, it looks like, what is that?
Exactly. And not to mention the, you know, the grounds, after a rainstorm, it's nothing but mud anyway, so that would be, that would help that out as well too.
Mr. Zoll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, just to chime in on this, because I think like many Milton residents, I frequent the Milton Arts Center, I think it's a fantastic community resource and I'd love to encourage Mr. Cohen to attend some of the programming. The driveway need is very real. My daughter, my oldest daughter, Ida, you know, has taught as a camp counselor at MAC, which provides some really great summer camps at very, very reasonable prices for Milton, Milton kids. And, and it can be a little bit of an adventure just trying to drop her off and now she's old enough to drive, but, which has its own risks. But, you know, I would, I think this is a great solution. I really appreciate, Mr. Chair, your suggestion of splitting the costs with them and I would love to invite Mr. Cohen to come to the Milton Arts Center, maybe one time when my band is performing. Thank you very much for bringing him.
Anybody else want to get into this?
I'm excited to see this happen.
Want to call my wife and see what she's doing like next month?
We want Pauline, yes.
No, I'm only kidding, I'm only, I'm just, so, so since you're here, are you running summer camp this summer?
Yeah, we are. Yeah, it's really daunting, honestly, you know.
What's the start date?
January, January, yeah, June 24th. About, yes.
And the website to the Milton Arts Center is?
Oh, okay, www.miltonartscenter.org.
And ages four to five in particular, we have a program for kids aged four to five and we got some openings for that, so if any young kids will look for, some morning and afternoon sessions, check it out.
Thank you.
If only all our agenda items could be this evening. All those in favor, this will be a roll call vote. Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
My sophias, Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Thanks, kids, have a good night.
Thank you so much, kids, thank you. Thanks a lot.
You're welcome, thanks. Okay. Where are we now? Consent, oh, I'm going to do this quick.
Six.
Oh, six. Oh yeah, we got to go back, we got to go back, let's hold on, we'll go back to where I was. This is two-sided paper tonight, okay. So, number seven, discussion approval, this is town board and committee appointments and reappointments in accordance with the list on the agenda below.
We can do that one if we want first.
Are we going to do this?
Oh, yeah, the budget, oh yeah, hold on, I'm lost. See, the biggest thing to talk about, it's all your fault. Okay, back to item six, discussion FY '26 budget, preliminary forecast, Mr. Milano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So since there's been quite a lot of discussions going to the FY '25 budget conversations, I felt it was important to try to get in early in terms of what fiscal '26 looks like. This will be an overview generally of the town's revenue, the town's expenditures, where we stand, what our next steps are, what are some of our goals are. So I'll run through this, any questions, please interrupt me. A lot of this will be information that we've shared and talked about before, kind of refresh for fiscal '26, so we'll provide an update on our schedule and process. We'll talk about some of our forecasting now fiscal '26 and beyond and then some of the goals and objectives in our budget process. So first of all, we're kicking off the budget process now. We typically would wait a few more months into the new fiscal year, which starts July 1st, but we're ahead of the many discussions we've had about '26, we're starting early. We're working on getting our budget templates out to solicit and receive departmental budget requests, start putting those together to really be able to fine tune where we expect fiscal '26 to land on a request basis, both for a level service budget, but also ensuring that we're talking and soliciting needs for '26 and future years. We're going to be updating our capital plan as we typically do around this time. Departmental budgets, we are expecting and hoping to have prepared and ready for warrant committee review by the end of summer. So by the time folks are back from vacations, we'll be deep into budget season. And then there will obviously be, at some point, this board will need to weigh in on the question of whether to have an override and take that action item and direct us to prepare two budgets to go to town meeting, one if an override is successful and one if it is unsuccessful. Obviously not asking for that now, but just as we've talked about it a lot, putting it again on everybody's radar. In terms of our assumptions for '26, the revenues are pretty straightforward, we anticipate our regular property tax increase under Proposition 2.5. What adds into that is new growth from new projects, renovations, additions and new housing construction, new commercial construction, et cetera. State aid, we had an interesting year with our state aid forecast for '25 where we expected a substantial increase because that had been the recent history. Turned out, we got the minimum increase and then heading into town meeting, we got word that those projections were increased. So we're being pretty conservative on state aid and keeping that to the minimum per people increase. Unrestricted general government aid is about $3.7 million, so we expect a small increase there. Local receipts are investment, interest income, permit and building fees, motor vehicle excise taxes, males taxes, which we were just talking about with the potentially new restaurant. One restaurant closed, which would hurt some of our males tax stuff. Two restaurants closed.
Two are closed, I know.
And right now, we're not assuming any use of free cash for, or any one-time funds for operations, just to have a baseline estimate. As I described, property taxes, you know, the levy increase by two and a half percent. So that's the total amount that we can, total amount of property taxes that we can levy on all taxpayers can only increase by two and a half percent a year. An individual home's property tax bill may fluctuate at different numbers based on how their value has changed year over year, but the total tax levy that we can raise on all taxpayers can increase by two and a half percent. New growth as well, as I mentioned, I'll talk about that a bit more in a second. And then how else can we increase the levy? Well, those are the two elephants in the room. Debt exclusion for a capital project such as a new school and then an operating override to fund additional expenses and operating budgets. This is just a few years of history, just to illustrate how consistent our tax, property tax increases are. We haven't had major changes, we haven't had major debt exclusions. It's about 3.3 to 3.5 million dollars of new money coming from property tax revenue each year, encompassing the two and a half percent that we're allowed to increase the levy by and then any new growth that comes on the tax bills. As you can see in fiscal '23 and '24, we had over $1.2 million in new growth. I have another slide that'll show that a little bit better. Our forecast for '26 is $850,000. Debt exclusions will stay the same. If a school project is approved, that would affect that, but it would be paid by taxpayers, obviously directly and not impact the operating budget. So what do we expect for property taxes? Bottom line is about 3.3 to 3.5 million dollars in new money in fiscal '26. In new growth, you can see what the history is here, that it has been higher in recent years than in our longer history. Obviously around 2008, 2009, as the economy crashed, projects weren't being built. A couple of things have happened in recent years, there's been increases on how personal property for utility companies has been assessed, so that's making up a big increase on the commercial side of our new growth. So new taxable value that is being added to the tax base. And the other element in the past couple of years, as you can see from '23 and '24, over $1.2 million in new growth and that's driven by the new residential, new residential construction that's been happening. Walcott Woods has been coming online slowly over those couple of years. 131 Elliott Street was built and came online over those years. In '25 and '26, the projects that we know about that are permitted include the 40B on the Parkway, Blueus Parkway, the Ice House, which is well underway. The 7-Eleven Randolph Ave has its building permit, 440 Granite Ave has its building permit.
Gone, so all the demolitions over, they're done.
So those projects will, they start now, but we expect to see that new growth take place in fiscal '25 and '26. Their building permit fees were paid in '24, 440 Granite and 7-Eleven Randolph Ave, it was over $400,000 in building permit fees that we have received and taken in in this fiscal year. So that is new revenue and we expect it to be strong, but we're remaining conservative in '26. That is something that can change as we go forward. I'll go quickly through this, Chapter 70 Education Aid, as you can show, is showing a slight change. This has been one that hasn't been very consistent in history. We get a big increase for a year or two and then minimal increase for a year or two. So it's hard to forecast it beyond anything conservative. General government aid, as you can tell, again, it's slight increases, one to three percent year over year. We budgeted for a two percent increase. Local receipts, as I mentioned, motor vehicle excise taxes, interest income, trash sticker fees, which again, as a reminder for everybody, those are going up in fiscal '25, so $4 a week or $4 for a sticker. So we increased our estimates for that. We've applied a two percent increase in '26 to these across the board, but one of the drivers, two of the drivers for our local receipts have been building permits and interest income. With high interest rates, the town is earning much more than it has on its money in recent years. That's not going to be around forever. Interest rates will eventually, we expect revert slightly lower than they are now. So at some point, we may have to revisit these local receipts forecasts. Right now, we're keeping it pretty level as to where we were in '25. That might be a little aggressive, but we're so far away that we don't have a real good sense of where that might be. So overall, as this kind of a summary of some of the takeaways that we have, consistently high-level collections on property taxes, can expect 3.3 to 3.5 million dollars there. Local receipts have been strong in recent years, but that's driven by things that are somewhat dependent on how the economy is doing. New growth has been strong in recent years, again, 131 Elliott, Walcott Woods, and we anticipate that to carry through in the immediate next couple of fiscal years. And there are additional potential projects to come, additional 40Bs. I only highlighted the ones that actually have building permits that we know will be doing construction. Chapter 70 Education Aid has been growing with the Student Opportunity Act, but not consistently, as an example, this year, where we have a much lower increase than we did in the prior year. The town does not have any additional capacity to level additional property taxes. Basically, everything that we can levy on residents, we do. Other communities with a different tax base might have more wiggle room to increase taxes. And then fundamentally, and lastly, as has been mentioned before, the reliance on single families and residential in particular, 93% of our tax revenue comes from residential properties, 87% of the residential value is single-family homes. So the point there is, those increases are felt deeply by people in this town and we understand that and we don't take that lightly. Some of this stuff could be adjusted as we go, we are very early in the process. We'll keep looking at new growth, seeing how that's going, seeing how those projects progress, what that might mean for '26. Local receipts, again, that's a lot of information that's dependent on how the economy is doing, so we'll continue to monitor the economic conditions. State aid, we probably won't get a lot of news on state aid until the governor releases her fiscal '26 budget in January of '25, so probably not a lot there. And then free cash, so the fiscal year closes June 30th, we expect to have free cash certified, hopefully in the fall. And so we'll have an update on free cash in the October timeframe, October, November. On the expenditure side, so turning the page and talking about how we spend it. So how we built this very preliminary first look at the budget was by applying a four percent increase to salaries to accommodate potential step increases. Not everybody will receive step increases, but many do. And then a COLA increase across the board, which most folks do receive and which we don't know at this point, as the collective bargaining agreements will expire at the end of fiscal '25. end of fiscal '25. So we have new collective bargaining agreements in place across town unions and school unions beginning in fiscal '26, the year we're talking about here. Schools provided a level service forecast at 4 and 1/2% in '26 and 5% in '27. I just want to be crystal clear, this does not discount any needs or anything, but we're just trying to provide kind of a baseline forecast. We know that school departments, town departments have needs that were requested. Some, very few were funded in '25. $245,000 was all that was funded in fiscal '25 of all the needs we received. So we know there's a, there's a big ask out there and a big, a need to increase and change the level of service provided in this town. We haven't accounted for any capital. We know that's an item, just as we haven't included free cash as a use, we're not using, we're not including free capital as an expense at this point. Health insurance, we plugged in a 5% increase, hoping that's market. I think we've had some long conversations about health insurance over the past year. That feels like that should be safe, but we'll see as we get closer. Retirement system, it's fully funded, so we're following our approved funding schedule and our OPEB policy that the sport approves, same as the OPEB trust. So it's a $1.56 million appropriation in '26 in accordance with our OPEB policy. There is no contribution to stabilization funds included right now. And lastly, debt services for '26 includes projects that we haven't borrowed debt for but have been approved. Any potential new projects that yet to be approved would likely not hit our budget until '27 with potential minimal impacts in '26. So that's just kind of the assumptions driving it. So what's the bottom line? We have estimated about $135.4 million in revenue in fiscal '26, $140 million in expenses, which gives us about $4.6 million as things stand today with a lot of conservative forecasts built in. So the figure could change. It could be higher. Hopefully, it doesn't get higher. And it also, I don't, can't say this loudly enough, it includes just bottom line, what do we, what can we do to keep things the same as they are today without any new changes? So that's very early in, in the process where things stand. I just wanted to cover a few other items. No, what are our financial indicators? What is the shape of the Milton Town's finances? You know, there, we are in good shape. It's a question of making these budgets work year over year. We have AAA bond rating. Our next ratings call will be in July and August, ahead of our next issuance of debt later this summer, fall. The retirement system is fully funded, one of only a few in the state that's fully funded. We're making significant contributions to our OPEB liability, unlike many other cities and towns which are focusing now on their retirement system. We've already done that. Our stabilization funds are about $7.3 million altogether as of March 31. Those numbers aren't final, just as our other money is earning income. Our stabilization funds have been earning accruing income with the high interest rate environment. So even though we're not putting money into stabilization, our general stabilization fund has earned a few hundred thousand dollars a year and is stronger now than it was July 1st. And our free cash balance is zero, as we've appropriated all of it, and will remain zero until it's certified again by DLS. This is just a graph showing stabilization funds, and this is it as a percentage of our general fund budget, which is about 5 and 1/2%, which is in good shape. Certainly would want to strengthen that, but it's in good shape generally. And so just what are, what is guiding us as we go through this process? You know, first and foremost, maintaining our existing level of service, providing information at a high level that's transparent about the financial condition and issues and questions facing the town. You know, how can we strengthen our financial resiliency as we go forward? Investing in our capital infrastructure, strengthening those reserves. And then, you know, I think this, we need to work together on formalizing some of our financial practices as into policy. We have an OPEB policy. There are other policies we should revisit, refresh and have approved by this board. And then a question on if we're moving forward on an override, you know, what are the additional needs that this board wants to see us invest in? What do our department heads see as places where they could expand what they provide to residents? How can we reduce the structural deficit that we continue to face year over year? And how can we control costs in future years to, you know, mitigate a need for one right away? And I think that's one of the bigger questions we'll face if we need to move forward with an override. How do we structure it so that it is not asking too much of taxpayers, but doesn't set us up to be in a position, be back in the same position in a couple of years where we're having this conversation in June with looking at a big deficit in the next fiscal year? If we're moving forward on an override. That's really it. I just wanted to take, take that time to give an overview. A lot of work that remains to be done. A lot of work remains to grab those budget requests we received the last year for investing in town and school departments, seeing if those are still everybody's priorities and evaluating those and taking those into consideration. You know, if there's questions that the board has, is there's additional information that you want me to share, or different ways to engage with folks about the budget? We're happy to do that. We plan to convene with the warrant committee sometime this summer, and then start some public meetings later in the summer and into fall as we think about what the decision points that we need to make for fiscal '26. And obviously, the school budget, I'm sorry, the school project plays into this, that we would, once we have estimated a cost, we can explain what the tax impact of that might be. When will that tax impact be felt? If there is or isn't an override, how does that impact taxes as well over the next couple of years? And what will that look like for the average house, the median house, and so on? So a lot of work to come, but I just wanted to give an update as to where things stood today, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Me?
No, I have a question for you.
Go ahead. I didn't know that, no, I don't know that there was a note to me. You should get that.
Ms. Bradley, I, Mrs. Bradley, then, Mr. Zoll, are you raising your hand too?
No, the camera was suddenly on me. I mean, I, I was the subject of the camera all of a sudden.
All right, Ms. Bradley.
Please go ahead, Ms. Bradley.
Thanks so much. So I, I'm trying to get used to the new leadership. And so, Mr. Chair, I guess my question to you would be, the finance committee has not met yet. We have not had our organizational meeting. Mr. Cohane has never dealt with the town budget before, and so I'm sure that he has a lot of questions about what he just saw on the screen. I would say that this type of meeting would not be appropriate for us to start going into the weeds with Mr. Cohane. So I, I would like to know if the plan is that the, all information about the town's finances will be handled at the select board member at level, or if we are planning on allowing the finance committee to meet and discuss such an early outlook? We're not even into FY '25 yet, and we're already discussing FY '26. And so I'm just trying to figure out from you, Mr. Chair, what your plan is for the finance committee.
Well, you know me, I'm not a micromanager. So once you're on a committee, I'm usually pretty good about, I mean, that's.
We've never seen this before. We had no information.
And my suggestion was we start getting this out there now.
Oh, yeah.
We've just never seen, the finance committee has never seen this presentation before. That's why I'm asking, what the, what your intention is and how we can best serve.
So I didn't, I, I didn't even, to be honest, I apologize, I didn't even look at that. Curly with how our night began, I mean, we've talked a lot about this. We've talked about this, I mean.
We have.
I'm like, this is, I know, I get it, I get it.
I'm trying to keep in mind that none of our members has never dealt with our budget, and so I.
And I'm being thrown into the middle.
And he really is. And so I just wanted to, for us to know that this is a lot of information for folks that have not been tracking it for years, even, even for the last two years. So I want to make sure that he has an opportunity to actually dive into this and that he's up to speed so that when things like this are presented to us without even seeing it prior to the meeting, we didn't see this. So I just wanted to know.
I didn't either.
Oh, nobody saw it? Okay. Oh, nobody saw it? Even better. So, so, so I just want to know, like, I know that we've been trying to get a meeting on the books. And so I just, I don't want to take up any more time, but I just wanted to let you know, Mr. Chair, that we are not prepared to discuss this budget or this presentation at all this evening.
Do not expect that.
Okay, thank you.
This was more of a, we talked, I, as you know, I've said this repeatedly, two things. I feel we need to be very proactive about painting this picture. I do have a little bit of experience in these passed overrides, going back to '86 and dear successes. You need to be strategic. Tonight, we got a lot of emotion, and I appreciate and I understand that, but we are in daunt, about to enter daunting waters.
Yes, we are.
Uncharted for this community, uncharted. So with regard to your committee, I'm fine with whoever you guys, for full disclosure, I've already, as you know, I've been meeting with Chair Carroll every week now for four weeks.
Oh, we didn't know that.
Just to talk about, just as chair to chair, just to talk about this, just to kind of like.
Is the chair of their finance committee?
No, 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 no. This is just chair of the school committee and chair of, but to their credit, Mr. Milano and Mr. Burrows have been meeting on a regular basis as well.
As they should.
To talk, to talk about where we're at on this, and this is not going to be easy. So I'm open to whatever is from the finance committee, however you want to start to tackle this.
I just want to bring John up to speed, is basically what I'm saying.
I'm with it.
Because this was a lot tonight that you just saw on the screen, and I'm sure there's going to be 101 questions. And so I just want, I want us to be able to have that conversation and not take up time as I watch the clock tick towards nine o'clock, Mr. Chair.
Don't worry about it. It's too important.
We need to meet, and so, yeah, me too.
Whenever.
Yeah. I emailed Nick, so I'm sure he's going to be on tomorrow. So we'll make that happen.
Okay, I'll make it work. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. It's a lot.
Thank you.
It really is a lot.
I know. So I need that out every time I turn around. I'm not a, I'm not as like, I'm, my look at it here is more of a big picture, like the whole, the challenge that is before us, and it's, it is daunting. So I'm happy with whatever you want to do. Mr. Zoll, see your hand is up? Is that all right? You, you?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. And before I start, Mr. Chair, your microphone has been a little quiet this evening, so I'm, it'd be great if we could get you turned up a little bit.
How do you do that?
You know, your voice is very important. Just two quick things on this, and I hear Ms. Bradley's comments, and I sympathize with Mr. Cohane very much and wish him good luck in the rigorous municipal finance. But I think, you know, two things, Mr. Milano, just to sort of, not to be a broken record and not to, to infringe too much upon the nine o'clock deadline, but we as a community continue to have three choices. Are we going to continue to have overrides every three to five years to keep the level of service that we want? Are we going to increase our commercial tax base revenue? Because as you saw in that slide, 93% of reliance on residential taxes is far and above any of our, what we might call neighbor communities. And so when is that, when is that investment in greater commercial and, and other income going to happen? Or three, our third choice is that we do neither of those things, and our level of service starts to plummet, and our properties lose value, and we become a less desirable place to live for seniors, for families with, have kids in school, for everybody. So that remains our choice. So far, we're continuing down Route 3, and I hope that we don't do that. The second point that I would like to ask Mr. Milano for the purpose of presenting information, because I think that was a specific request. I know that we lost a $250,000 grant last week because we are still not compliant with the MBTA communities. And I know that we have discussed multiple times over multiple meetings, having a dollar impact of what the no vote has cost our town, both in terms of legal services, in terms of lost grants and revenues, and other things, which I think are super pertinent when we're talking about trying to balance our budget. And so I would humbly request that we no longer have a presentation like this that doesn't have that dollar amount, because I think it's very important that people understand that, yes, while we've already had the vote, we continue to lose money because of that vote. And we heard today about another vote that might cost money in terms of building a school. I, for one, would much rather use my money to build a school than throw it down a hole because we're, we're not compliant with a law that we're eventually going to have to be compliant with. So I would really humbly ask that we start to present those numbers. And Mr. Milano, I will reach out to you tomorrow because I think it's long overdue that we have a public reckoning about how much that has cost us and continues to cost us $250,000 last week. Thank you.
Ms. Musto.
Thank you. A couple of things. Excuse me. So 4.6 million approximately is just for level service for all departments, including schools, correct?
Yes.
Now, my second question is, I remember a while ago, you did a presentation, I think it was before the warrant committee and/or something, you were talking about over five years, like a 18 or 20 million dollar in the hole. So I'm sort of curious how this will translate over time. Over how many years do you think, like, this type of an override would actually last? In fact, during in, I mean, you know, factoring in raises, rollovers, insurance and all of that, I think that has to be played out too, because, you know, if we're going to ask people for money, you know, I would think people would want to know that that's going to last for some time and not be two years later, we're back here.
Yes, that's, that is probably the, after figuring out what the needs that should be funded, is probably the second most important question of any potential override is, okay, we have these, we have level service, we have these needs we want to fund, how do we make it sustainable? There are different strategies that different communities have used. Some will set aside free cash into a separate fund and say, hey, over the next three to four years, we'll draw down from these monies. Other communities put memorandum of understandings in place between the select board, their finance committee, and the school committee that says, okay, we're moving forward with an override, but we three agree that over the next several years, we're going to limit certain budget increases to certain percentages. And so there's, you know, an agreement about cost control built in. Another option is, you know, say there's, to use round numbers, $6 million of level service and needs that the select board feels that should move forward for an override, you could ask for an override of $7 million and put that additional million into stabilization in the first year. In the second year, the addition, of the additional million, and I'll put a half a million into stabilization. In the third year, you start drawing down from that. So there are different potential ways. There's no magic wand to wave to say, now we're good, the structural deficit is resolved. Just naturally, our revenues don't keep up with expenses once you start thinking about just the cost of run our departments, the cost to pay for our utilities, the cost to employ our personnel. So all of that weighs in. We have, the budget numbers I spoke to specifically about '26 at this early stage come from a workbook where we plug in five-year forecasts. So it provides an estimate over those five years, what it will look like. And it's, you know, 4.6 this year, and then increases about, you know, $2 million a year as, as a deeper hole each year, as our expenses outpace potential revenues. So that's the hardest question, I think, that remains to be solved, and I don't necessarily have a recommendation at this point, but working with yourselves, finance committee, and colleagues in town, perhaps we can come up with a solution that will be attractive to taxpayers and make sense for a few years of sustainability here.
Thank you. I just want to, as a follow-up, I know Mr. Zoll had asked for the cost on the, you know, the, the no vote and so forth in terms of grants we've lost. I'd like to know what the cost would be if we had implemented that in terms of tech, the cost for our DPW for putting in new lines for sewer, septic, actually sewer, for our health department in terms of having to do more inspections for housing, roadwork, police, fire, all of that, because that is a cost as well. So that would be something, if we're going to go down that path, I think it would only be fair to really look at that as well. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just a quick comment on that. Ms. Musto might be interested in the financial report that was done about the MBTA communities that found that if the MBTA communities were fully built out, it would have been a net positive of $1 million per year for Milton tax base. So I understand there would be some cost, but obviously, it would have been, it would be impossible to project how quickly things would have been built and how that money would have been spent. But it's very real, how to count the monies that we're spending on lawyers and the dollars in lost tax revenue. So you're comparing fictional numbers with factual numbers, but we do have the fact that if we had passed the MBTA Communities Act, it would have been a net positive, we would be a million dollars greater on our budget because denser housing provides better tax revenue than the, than single-family housing. So, but I'm happy to forward that to you if you've never read that in the first place. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Final call, yeah.
Yep. I've actually seen that report. I will tell you though, I sit on another board, and I know that, that certain departments were never asked for any of this information, including, I know the Board of Health was not, and Board of Health does a lot of inspections with housing, for instance. And I know Mr. Milano could. with housing, for instance. And I know Mr. Milano could attest that we presently have a few in the court system right now. And there's a cost to that too. So, you know, I did read that report, I will tell you I did. However, I know that a lot of the department heads were never personally asked how they run their department and what would be needed. Thank you.
Okay, we're done with that?
Yes.
We can be done with it, Mr. Chair.
All done. Ms. Bradley's got a question, so I need, all right. So let's, let's, let's stay on, let's, you sure? So let's stay on track, yeah. I get it, I mean, but we have a mission we're on and that's what I'm going to try to, I had things I was going to say, I'm going to go, I'm just gonna, look, I'll just reiterate, we need to be out in front of this. This is something for all of us. This is a significant challenge. The only thing I will say, because Mr. Zoll made a point about overrides, when the first override, and Mrs. McEtrick, who happened to be here tonight, Joe McEtrick, former member of the Select Board, was the first chair of the first override committee. And after two and a half, those first people that, you know, that took on this challenge, the thought was to try to get five years on each override and stretch it out on every five years. And then there were curveballs on that. In 2009, we had just passed an override, Governor Patrick was, was governor and the economy fell apart. And he came in and he, basically with nine seat cuts, local aid cuts, we lost almost the entire override that we had just passed. I think it was like three and a half million, not six months earlier. And it took a really, we were back at it. We got lucky and I give, Mr. Walker, who was chair of the school committee, he was one who first came up with the level doll, level service exercise where you had to kind of like hold on to everything and you could only ask for what was most critical. And as Ms. Dexter will remember, there was very little that you could give, almost similar to this year, the 240, one department got 245,000, everyone else was like, go make it work, it's, it's level doll. And then for the past few years, Ms. Bradley and Ms. Musto will know, we lucked out with COVID monies, upper money on the federal level, upper money in the county level. Actually, it began with the CARES Act money, which was even, which even predated that. And now that's all gone. And people expect a certain quality of life. You know, they expect their trash to be picked up. They expect only down 911, that the police or the fire or the AMs, they expect the line to reopen. They expect the schools to have the proper number of staff and teachers in there, in all the programs sped and all those expenses that challenge our budget. Every, I've been hearing the word budget buster since before I was chief and that was in 2007 when I became chief. So I'm just going to leave it with this, this is going to take all of us. And we need to be strategic and thoughtful and keep our eye on the ball on this. It just, that's what we have to do. So I think I'll let it keep the agenda moving since magnetic clock is blown out of the water now. Thank you.
9:30.
Nah, we'll definitely, okay. So now we're going to go to item seven, am I correct?
Yes.
Sometimes we just get sidetracked, yeah. Okay, this is discussion approval, town board committee appointments and reappointments in accordance with the list on the agenda. Do we want to waive the reading of the, and just go with the motions? I'll, I'll, whatever's faster, whatever you want to do. Go ahead, Ms. Bradley.
I had a couple of questions.
Sure. Good night, Amy. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. I had a couple of questions and I just don't know, so I'm just going to ask. So last meeting we had, there was a couple of our secondary select board appointments that we did not undertake last meeting, but they're not on this list.
Next meeting.
They're going to be on the next meeting. Okay.
We split the agenda in two, just to.
Okay. And then my second question is, I know that we have an updated folder with people's applications. And so is this not a full appointment of open spaces for these committees? Because for example, I know that there are applications pending for the master plan implementation committee. So that's going to be taken up on the 25th.
Yes.
Okay. So I'm keeping a running track of the future agenda items that we've discussed. So when we get to that bullet point, I just want to make sure that we are all on the same page for that. And so I can move that all this stuff. You're lucky. I like you right now. So.
Right now. It changes with the wind.
So are we ready to go on all of this?
Go ahead.
Can I just ask real quick, sorry, and I will, I will vote for, for everything, but do we always, do we get every application? Because I know that I haven't seen some of these names come through my inbox and I'm just a little concerned that we're, there's some selection process that's happening. I think all this, everybody on the select board should know about who's applying for select board appointed, like everyone who applies for a select board appointed committee. So I just, I'm curious about the process there. Maybe Mr. Milano can address it and then I'm, I'm happy to go forward with the vote and I have no more questions.
Sure. So we don't necessarily send out, we try to send out applications as they're received by email. More generally, what will happen when we get a bunch around the same time as we have over the past couple of weeks, a bunch, we've gotten more than we had in recent months, is we created the shared folder and put everybody whose application we received into it. For reappointments, you would not have seen applications from, we just reach out and consult that they're, they're interested in being reappointed. So for appointments, I think for tonight, I think the only appointment of somebody new to a board or committee that's not a reappointment is Mr. Driscoll to the capital improvement planning committee. He had applied a few months back. We had, we sent that out, but it's also included in the shared folder. And the other new appointment is a staff member as a non-voting member on a, on a committee. So everybody else's reappointments, but Mrs. Zoll, if you're, we can redistribute that link and just let me know if, if you're not seeing it or just want a list of the names, if that might be more helpful.
Thanks, Mr. Milano. Rescinding the link would be great. That's, that's it.
Yep. No, we'll do that.
Thanks for your indulgence, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Can I make a comment on that too? I know you, Roxanne and Erin have been working on the committees.
Yeah, we worked it in.
You're done. Oh, good.
We did that.
Because I've also been working with Nick and, and we're, we're making some progress as to getting them all in those shared folders so that all the applications are in those shared folders and the charters in that shared folder. So everything can, everything with that committee can be in, it's a process, as you know. But we've been making, I think, Nick, we've been making great, I think we've been making great progress. And, and so we're going to keep at that.
Absolutely.
We're going to keep at that.
Sounds good.
No, that's great.
Moving right along.
Are you ready, Mr. Chair?
I'm ready.
Do I have to read each one individually or can I just?
I, I think she could read them all and then vote at the end. Right? Am I right?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Let's go.
Just for the.
So it's your motion and you.
My motion, I'm about to read it all. Okay, ready? I move to reappoint Kathleen Conlin, David Godin. Godin, thank you. Raju Pathak and Andrew Schmidt to the airplane noise advisory committee for a one-year term. I move to reappoint Alyssa Cook, Daniel Day, Teresa Dedmond, Robert Mayhew, Victoria Shea and George Tagheas to the animal shelter advisory committee for a term to expire on December 31st, 2024. I move to reappoint Jean Peterson for a three-year term on the board of registrars. I move to reappoint Jim Davis and Michael Hale to the capital plan, improvement planning committee for a one-year term. I also move to appoint John Driscoll to the capital improvement planning committee for a one-year term. I also move to reappoint Arthur Doyle, Alexander Hasha, Ron Israel and Margaret Oldfield to the climate action planning committee for a one-year term. Also move to reappoint Chief John King as keeper of the lockup, I love that, for one-year term. I also move to reappoint Elaine Benson, Richard Burke, Regina Campbell Malone, Tabor Keely and Cheryl Tagheas to the master plan implementation committee for a term, for terms to expire on October 27th, 2025. I also move to reappoint Tabor Keely to the metropolitan area planning council for a one-year term. I also move to reappoint Mark Burke, Kristen Downey, Meredith Hall and Becky Simons.
Mark Boyle. Keep going.
Oh, and Mark Boyle, sorry, to the open space and recreational planning committee for one-year term. I also move to reappoint Nicholas Milano, Richard Burke, Ted Carroll and Tim Swinski, a non-voting member, to the select board landing committee for a one-year term. I also move to appoint Cheyenne Frazier, a non-voting member, to the select board landing committee for a one-year term. And finally, I move to reappoint Marion Driscoll, Stephen Geister and Joseph Sloan to the traffic commission for a one-year term.
Give a second.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Musto. So this is going to be a roll call vote. I will have one abstention. So I'll be abstaining on the animal shelter committee because of.
Yeah, I got you.
So, so roll call vote. Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Cohane?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Myself, Mr. Zoll. Is that, I didn't hear, I thought I, you're muted.
Yes, sorry about that.
Done. Moving right along? Okay.
Nine.
Nine. So discussion on town administrator evaluation. Okay. So I moved the, I moved to approve the town administrators' evaluation process and timeline and designate myself, that's fine, myself to serve as the reviewer and prepare a consensus evaluation. If I'm correct, I will send this out to, Lynn will send this out to all the members if they, is that what you did last year?
So we'll, we'll send it out and members can return it to Carla, Fede, HR director.
Oh, yeah.
And then she can provide it to you. So the timeline, there's no immediate deadline. I put it on aggressive timeline, but I, if, however the board wants to handle it, we could maybe make a timeline for the second, our second meeting in July or.
I was just going to say, second in July, Mark. Yes, you're okay?
Are you going to put out also the aggregated responses like I did last year?
Yeah, after we get them?
Yeah.
Yes.
Because last year we didn't receive all the select board members' responses.
Okay.
So I'm hopeful that this year that all the select board members will respond. So we can see aggregated what they're thinking.
You got that, Lynn?
So we'll update a timeline in accordance and to push everything out to get it to July, the second meeting in July, if that works for the board. Okay.
Okay. So, yeah, do we need to approve, do we need to vote on this? Discussion approval, I guess?
No, consensus of the board is fine.
Yeah, I don't think we need to vote it. Okay. You okay with that? Okay. Okay. So I want to make a motion, this is the consent agenda, I'm going to move to approve the consent agenda as it appears on the agenda.
A second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Nope, roll call.
Oh, oh, my, I'm sorry, sorry, Mr. Zoll. Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Cohane?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Myself, Mr. Zoll, he's smiling, that's a yes.
Yes. And just want to point out, because we pointed out last year, David Chestnut is a fascinating historical figure, very early member of the black community in Milton, a total leader. And so the David Chestnut Jazz Festival at the Eustace Estate commemorates him, his love for jazz and his connection to the Eustace Estate. I would encourage people to read up about it.
Attend it. Right?
Yeah.
Our attend, yeah. Okay. Discussion approval, meeting minutes, May 28th, 2024. Do I have a motion before us?
May 28th first?
Oh, sure.
Thanks so much. The amended minutes that were received were only those two small changes, right Lynn? Okay, thank you. That's all I wanted. Yep.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from May 28th, 2024.
Second?
Oh, yes.
Second, Ms. Bradley? Discussion? Ms. Bradley?
Oh, yes.
Yeah. Mr. Cohane?
I'm like, I don't have a discussion.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Myself, yes, and Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Do you all stand on your administrators' report?
I have three quick things. Two new employees.
Away my time as chair.
Look at that, we were cruising too.
Two new employees, Leann Baxter started in DPW yesterday, so welcome Leann to DPW.
As in the workforce or administrative force?
Work, workforce.
See, I did that just for you.
I wanted to know. And we have appointed a new officer, Nicholas Gold, who has previous academy training, will not need to go through the academy, which is, accelerates his timeline to be available as an officer, but he'll have a longer field training time. So Mr. Gold starts on June 24th and the Nicholas's are slowly but surely taking over Milton, doing our best efforts to do so.
Where's he coming from?
He is at a private security currently. And then just, Mr. Zoll alluded to it, but we did, had applied for a municipal fiber grant and were turned down for eligibility around MBTA communities. We had applied for the full amount, $250,000, received notice from the community compact division of local services end of last week that it was not approved due to eligibility around MBTA communities. I've shared that with Attorney Martin and others, but I just wanted to share it with the board as well. And that's my update for tonight.
Sure.
I just wanted to know, I read the letter that came in through that. And one of the, the sentences that was interesting to me is that it says that we are out of compliance with the mass general laws, which is a new way that they are saying we are denied from things. So I'm wondering if that, because of that language, it means that we would most likely be denied for grants moving forward. It just seemed like new verbiage to me. And so it makes me concerned like about the senior, I know we applied for a new van for the senior center. I'm just, it's just.
That's a good observation. I honestly didn't pick up on that. We did apply through the community transit grant program for a new.
COA van.
COA van, COA bus, excuse me.
Sorry.
And that was unsuccessful.
That was also unsuccessful.
We didn't receive any feedback about that. It just, we were applied and we were not awarded the grant was the amount of information we got around that. Senator Timlty did secure an earmark in the Senate budget for some funding for a COA vehicle, but that's separate from obviously a grant program. But yes, that's a good observation. Honestly, it went by me. I appreciate it. I'll, I'll raise.
Can we ask, I'm just, it just makes me nervous that because of that language, that that might be the new thing that they're using and we might lose all grants that we're applying for that state-funded, not federal, but any state-funded grants. So I just.
I'm tied to that group that was listed in it. Like, I'm tied to the group of funds that was listed.
So yeah, so what they're saying is that because we're not in compliance with the general laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, that any funds that come from the state would not be, we would not be eligible to even try for them. It's new language that they're saying to us. And so it just, it rose the hairs on the back of my neck because I was just concerned. Is there any way, Mr. Chair, that we could go back and ask why we didn't get that COA grant? Because if it was another reason, I'd like to know because I would like us to try that again.
Oh, we will be reapplying next year and we plan to reach out to get feedback on the application.
Amazing. Thank you so much. And thank you for looking into it. It just really, it was new.
Yep.
Good.
I am, yes, excuse, sorry.
Good. You sure?
Crossed off by a list. Yes, thank you.
The only thing I would say in my chair's report is that, clearly we have a lot on our plate these days, but I, I want to make a specific, I really want to specifically say thank you to Chair Carol of the school committee as Mr. Milano knows that we reached out and started talking right after the election. We've met weekly ever since to try it. Because I do believe that whatever decision, whatever, however we do decide to move forward on this, I'm that for the chair of the school committee and the chair of the select board to be in lockstep in this. And you've heard me say that to her now many times. So I, I want to thank her again for being as open and receptive and willing to meet so regularly on a regular basis with me. So, and I know she, for those of you who don't know, I won't name her, but she works at a place, a, in nonprofit that in my time on the police department, we had a very longstanding working relationship with them when they were in Brookline. And I'm, I'm a big fan of that organization that she works for. So, so thank you, Chair Carol, for everything you've done so far. So, anything else? Future meeting agenda. So we're here in two weeks, January 25th.
January? It's a lot. It's June.
June 25th.
Said another word tonight.
What?
No, not you. It was another word. I'll, I'll brief you after.
I did not say.
No, 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 no. So I just flipped my pages. Okay. So future meeting dates, Tuesday, June 25th, Tuesday, July 9th and Tuesday, July 23rd. Mr. Milano and I did talk today, if we can, we might take one of the July meetings off. And if we could do everything in one night meeting in July and maybe stuff something in, I think that would be a minimal. I see, I see Mr. Zoll smiling. So he didn't mess like.
I can't quite tell what you're saying, Mr. Chair. I still have a little trouble hearing you, but I, it sounds like either we're doing three nights in July or one night in July. And my guess is that it's the latter.
I'm hoping for one, Mr. Zoll, if we can do it. So.
That's what I figured.
So other than that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
16. 16. Which is future agenda items. Which is future agenda items, I just want to make sure.
Oh, yeah, future agenda items, I got that.
Okay, so I have three, I have the debt exclusion, I have the postal trucks.
Yep.
In front of MAC, and I have the.
Now they know what's coming for them.
Right, I don't, hey, I've been talking about this for a while with Nick. And the secondary select board appointments that were postponed from the previous meeting.
You got it.
Okay, thanks. Now I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Sorry, I have one agenda item too. If we could, if we could just get a report back from Mr. Milano on the EEA, whether it's a part of the town administrator or a separate agenda item, or it might make, might make sense to be part of the school building discussion.
Or if we get it earlier.